I'd like to call or order the joint meeting of Glendale City Council and the Glendale Redevelopment Agency for March 20, 2007 at 3:23 PM. If we have a roll call for the City Council.
Council members Manukian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Yusefian.
Here.
Mayor Weaver.
Here.
You have a roll call for the agency, please.
Agency members Manukian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Chairman Yusefian.
Here.
Thank you. May I have your report?
Agenda for the March 20, 2007, joint public meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Redevelopment Agency was posted on Thursday, March 15, 2007, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Next, please.
One is Director of Development Services regarding development opportunity for agency city-owned property located at 111 East Wilson Avenue at 1A's Agency Motion Providing Direction to Staff on Various Options to Develop the Property.
With that, I'll go to Mr. Starbird, who'll go to...
Go to Mr. Lansafame again, Phil.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council and Redevelopment Agency, this project, this property involves property that the city owns, just adjacent to property that the Redevelopment Agency owns. We refer to it as the Panda Insight, it's where Panda is, and the parking lot. Back in November of 2006, we were working with a developer that presented us with an unsolicited proposal to develop a hotel on the site. In November, you directed staff, rather than enter into an exclusive negotiating agreement, you directed staff to continue to work with that developer, who at the time was partnering with Marriott Corporation, to bring a courtyard by Marriott to the site. They had worked diligently, they worked at design, and then, much like the last item we heard, there was a private business agreement that needed to be negotiated between the two private parties that staff was not privy to. We were just recently notified by the developer and by the hotel operator that they were unable to come to business terms on this particular site. The Marriott Corporation is still very interested in Glendale and is looking at alternative sites. The developer is still very interested in this site and has sought agreements and partnerships with other hotel providers, namely Intercontinental, to bring a relatively new concept called Indigo, which if I read the information correctly, is one of the first branded boutique hotels. So, they are still interested in developing the site. We are back to where we were in November with the same or with similar recommendations for you, and we're seeking your direction as to how you would like us to proceed. We could continue to work with Comar Development. They do have a lot of history on the site, they've worked through some of the design issues, although not all of them, there's still, there's some issues with the adjacent Alex Theater, both in terms of construction and then future operation. We could, second alternative would be to master plan the entire block. We had talked about that through the downtown specific plan, and Development Services and planning just have not been able to start that, but if your direction today is, we would move that up on the schedule, the work schedule. A third option would be, if you want to see a hotel on that site, would be for staff to prepare an RFP and send that out to the hotel world, to the developers and hotel operators. Comar and any other interested parties would certainly be able to participate in that, and it would give you an opportunity to see several different proposals at one time. We could submit an RFP or issue an RFP for any use, if you say, if you, if your desire, hotel sounds good, but what are some of the other ideas that people have? We could issue it for any use. And finally, as before, we could leave this in the status quo. The property generates about $120,000 a year between the two properties, both in agency rent and revenue from the parking meters, and we could just leave it sit until we thought that the timing was right to go back out with an RFP or some other opportunity. Those are the five alternatives, and really, we're looking to you for direction. If you have a combination of those alternatives or something else in mind, we're certainly prepared to carry that out.
Okay, I've got a lot of cards. Mr. Starbird?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just a quick observation on the last option that Phil mentioned, and that is, I guess I call it the do-nothing option at this point. Just to add to what Phil said, I think we've yet to see exactly what all of the opportunities may be for this area. We have a number of unknowns on the horizon. For example, Mann Theater, and what will become of that property and the Exchange, the eventual developer of the DPS S Building. We know right across the street down at the entrance to the Exchange is the Maryland Hotel, which has always been a challenge, and as goes the theater, so might become an opportunity for that property. So it just seems there are, at least with respect to that general area, there are a number of things that are up in the air yet. That could all lead you to a conclusion that unless there really is the right opportunity at this time, maybe it's just something we should wait on. That's for you to judge. It may very well be that the, that Comar or others who are inside, maybe they have a product that it makes sense moving forward now. On the other hand, I'm not sure it's always a bad idea to wait and see how the lay of the land shakes out over time as well. So, it doesn't necessarily mean there won't be a good window of opportunity later on.
Okay, I have seven cards. I'd like to have them from the Comar side first, because I'm sure there's others. Who's going to be the lead? Five minutes for the leads, and then, want to try three for the others unless it turns out bad?
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council Members and City Staff. My name is Rodney Khan, and today I'm here on behalf of Comar Investments. We've been working on this project for the past year, and our architects have designed what we think is a very nice-looking, very well-designed, high-quality building that will actually anchor the northern end of the Exchange. With me today, I have Vache Hanesian from Comar Investments, I have Aram Alajijian, I also have Matt Hayman from Indigo Hotels, and Kostya Shervanian. All would like to speak very briefly. We also have other people in the audience as well. The reason that we are here, and the reason that we have such a large attendance, is we want to make it very clear to the City of Glendale how important this project is, how important this hotel is to Comar Investments. The staff report lists first to continue to work with Comar on the site, and very briefly in part it reads, continuing with Comar may have the benefit of expediting the site's development and the generation of tax revenues. Their design team has made progress in addressing staff's design concerns and achieving the branded operator's minimum 150-room requirement. Over this past year, we've met with staff several times. We've actually met with the Alex Theater Board, other hotel operators, and are clearly very far along in terms of the design of our project. Mr. Starbird mentioned, as well as Mr. Lansafame did, about putting out an RFP or master-planning the block, or doing nothing with the site. Those are all very reasonable suggestions. However, the problem is, none of us have a crystal ball. We cannot foresee the future. From our perspective, we have something that is here today. We have something that we are presenting, a project that is very real, we feel is the highest and best land use for this site, which is a hotel. We have a well-financed developer and an exciting new brand in terms of Indigo, and that this project can move faster than any other proposal that would be proposed to the city. What I'd like to do is I'll sit down, we do have a number of speakers, and I'll turn it over to Vache, and he can talk to you a little bit about what his experience has been and how the project is moving forward. Thank you for the chance to speak.
Just your name for the record.
Vache Hanesian, Comar Investments, 23 Corporate Plaza, Newport Beach, California. Well, it's been a long time. It's been a year and a half we've been working on this project, and I would like to first of all thank Jim, Phil, and Mark. Obviously, we've been spending a lot of time together. So, Comar Investments, we're excited about going forward with this project. We have spent many, many hours with different hotel brands, and we believe this is the best use and best hotel for the site with Hotel Indigo. We've been involved with this project, like I said, over a year and a half, and spent a lot of design time, study time with different vendors, and it's been obvious, there have been good studies, because other groups have also used those studies. So, what we're asking for is that Comar Investments gets an ENA and moves forward with this project. So I'll make it short, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Yusefian?
Is anyone at any time going to talk about Indigo, has something to show? Okay. I have no clue what that is.
Who's next? Oh, okay.
But before we do that, we want to update you with the progress...
No, before you do that, you give your name for the record.
Sorry about that. I'm Aram Alajijian, I'm the project architect for the proposed hotel project here. First of all, I want to thank Phil Laszlofein, the entire team here in the City of Glendale, that, you know, we worked together for the past few months and trying to resolve a lot of issues. So the time that you saw the project that was in front of you in late November, it has, we have fine-tuned that, it has a lot of changes that incorporates the city and Alex Theater requirements. I want to distribute those brochures to you, which illustrates basically Indigo Hotels' program, as well as the changes or illustration about the hotel. Also, we have a two-and-a-half-minute video presentation, and that would be my presentation, basically, to update you about the project. I'm going to ask my partner, Saco Marcusi, to come up here, and so we could show you on the screen.
I have news for you, this does not count, it gets here in three minutes.
We need to use the remote, sorry.
Do we need to use the remote to...
There you go. Okay.
It's not coming up.
Is it?
It's not.
We have a technical delay?
Yes.
Old batteries, probably. My remote does the same thing when the battery gets old, it starts running.
It's working, all right.
This isn't the place.
I think there's something to change.
Oh, this is the way that...
It's a Mac.
Yeah. It'll be a heck of a commercial for Mac.
Marriott looks... It's going to reboot. It's this. Tell them it keeps switching, it keeps working.
Your battery's old.
Screens.
Full screen.
Yeah, we saw that.
Stay there.
This happened, was before.
Yeah, I was working before.
Yeah, we had it working today.
Yes, we tried it today before the meeting.
The system was supposed to be shut down.
It was, it was right after I was getting...
That was the one that we tried to download.
Oh, is that the one? Oh, that was the one?
That was your desk, I don't know.
Could you enlarge this, and we can turn it around?
Well, I could do that. I could do a full screen here, but I'm not sure if that's what you want.
That's okay.
See, the lawyer got it right.
Yeah, it's not Canada, it's not...
When in doubt, turn it off and start again.
Should I start?
No, no.
Yeah, should I turn it on again?
That's...
Should we start?
It might be that you're not recognizing.
Okay, sorry.
It's like how it happens in a, in our presentation.
If that's okay, then, you know, if not, we'll turn it on, and just show the recognize laptop.
All of a sudden it works. It's either that or a real heavy hammer.
He's typically talking.
Here's technical help.
See the problem with turning off the projector is it takes 15 minutes for it to boot up again.
Yeah, we had to reboot.
Okay, yeah, okay, I'm on it.
Oh, you're coming, okay.
Yeah, okay.
Almost there.
Everyone bow to greatness.
The lawyer got it right. It's either turning it off or hitting it with a hammer. Two remedies. And that's like, that's like the dark wood line. Might as well walk out, we're not doing anything.
I lost my screen there.
Yeah, I see the screen, actually.
Yeah.
Open up.
It's opening up. They lost all kinds of power in there, too. So that may be it. Okay, lawyer.
Okay.
Ah, there we go. Okay, I just, I want to go to full, um... Full screen. Could we turn down the light a little bit, please? Thank you.
Where are the other guys?
Okay. Sorry, I wasn't able to get the sound, but this is just... Okay. Full music background.
The corner of Wilson and Maryland Avenue.
Do a nerve, yeah.
This is looking north, uh, in the middle of Maryland.
Speak into the call.
This is a look from the top of the building, we're looking towards the courtyard area, and you can see the swimming pool and courtyard amenities here. It's on the upper deck, second floor of the hotel. The central tower's the elevators. Right. Where did it stop? We're coming down from north to south from Maryland Avenue towards the corner of Wilson.
Should I turn on?
Yes, we're turning on Wilson. Chose Marriott on a sign, this was done earlier, when Marriott Architects were looking at it, so. It's coming from the alley side, which is, you know, part of the private property, and And again, we're looking to the courtyard area, at the rooms that looking into the courtyard. That would be on the next presentation. And we're moving towards the loading area of the Alex Theater. So this is the presentation, thank you for your patience.
I'm difficult, please.
And sorry for problems, right. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we have a representative from Indigo Hotel that likes to speak about the project.
Matt or Kostya?
And then we'll go to Kostya.
Matt? Okay. Name for the record.
Good afternoon, members of the council, my name is Matt Hayman. I am the Regional Director of Franchise Development for Hotel Indigo and Intercontinental Hotels Group. Hotel Indigo is very excited about this partnership with Comar Investments, and we're very excited about the development here in Glendale. Hotel Indigo, as was mentioned earlier, is the first branded boutique hotel in the hotel industry. Our first hotel opened in Atlanta, Georgia, in October of 2004. We are now up to eight open hotels within the Hotel Indigo chain, and our pipeline of development opportunities now over 40 hotels throughout the United States. Intercontinental Hotels Group is the largest hotel group in the world in terms of the number of rooms. We are the founder of two legacy brands, and those two legacy brands are Intercontinental Hotels and Resorts, as well as Holiday Inn. We are the first hotel company to introduce the branded boutique segment, and we also are part of the Intercontinental Hotels chain, and part of that benefit is, of course, the Priority Club Rewards Frequent Guest Program, which is the largest hotel frequent guest program in the world. We currently have over 31 million members in that program. We have reviewed the site, we have looked at the site, we have looked at the demographics of the area, and Hotel Indigo and Intercontinental Hotels Group is very excited about this opportunity. We are very excited about our partnership with Comar Investments, as well as a partnership in terms of financial, as well as management opportunities within Comar. So we're very excited about this, and in the sense of time, thank you for your time, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Yusefian?
Forgive me, by the way.
That's okay.
What I'm about to say, I heard the same exact thing, almost verbatim, from Marriott.
Mm-hmm.
As a matter of fact, Marriott went a little bit further by saying that they're going to put money into this hotel, they're going to have to be, they want to be a partner with Comar for the next 25 years, and so on and so forth. It sounded like it was a done deal, and they went out, they worked their fingers to the bone with the staff and everybody else, and just dropped it like a hot potato and walked away. So what is it to keep you from doing the same thing? Why should I get excited about something that there is, is there some kind of an agreement that is signed between you and them that is binding, or it just, you like to have a chance to try it?
No, Mr. Yusefian, we do not have a, there is no binding agreement that we have at this point in time between Intercontinental Hotels or Hotel Indigo and Comar Investments. Strategically, this development fits in with the global strategy of Intercontinental Hotels Group, as well as Hotel Indigo. The state of California, as well as all regions within the West Coast, are of the number-one priority with the brand. Unlike any conversations with Marriott or Courtyard or any of the other brands, Hotel Indigo is a new brand, and in order to get the distribution that we really need to, you know, we are looking at developments throughout, you know, the United States, and California is a great area for us to be in, and we are actively seeking developments in the area. We do have a development under process in San Diego, and we are looking to expand our presence within the western half of the United States. That's my role.
So is San Diego the only hotel you have currently under development?
In California? In California? Currently, yes it is.
Okay, so, and if you get this site, this will be the second one?
This would be the second, yes it would.
Thank you. Mr. Quintero?
What are you projecting in terms of daily room rates?
Daily room rates? We would, we project rates anywhere from $180 to $200 per night. Some of our initial projections is that we would be looking at TOT returns of approximately $1 million per year.
And how many rooms are we talking about?
I think the number that we've been looking at is somewhere between 140 rooms and 150 rooms.
There's 144 in this.
And what intercontinental properties do you have here in the Los Angeles area?
In the Los Angeles area? Now, I'm happy to say that we have representation of all six of the seven brands from Intercontinental, which is our luxury brand hotel in the Century City area, all the way down to Crown Plaza. We have a number of Crown Plazas in the area, as well as Holiday Inns, Holiday Inn Express, Stabard Suites, and Candlewood Suites.
And I was thinking in terms of Intercontinental, you've got Century City and what other, are there other Intercontinentals here in LA?
The only Intercontinental hotel is in Century City.
Mr. Starbird?
It might be helpful, Mr. Hummon?
Hayman.
Hayman. Can you describe the level of services in a typical Indigo, the amenities, the level and nature of the services?
The hotel is a branded boutique, and we really like to consider ourselves a select service hotel, and by select service, that, I guess that's a fancy term of saying that we do offer full services, but we don't necessarily offer all the services that a luxury brand hotel, like our Intercontinental brand, would have. That particularly pertains to areas such as meeting and banquet facilities. Hotel Indigo is not required to, and typically will not have much banquet or meeting space. It might be typically 3,000 to 4,000 square feet of meeting or banquet space. We do have an exercise facility within the hotel, we do have a food and beverage concept within the hotel where guests can get breakfast, guests can get dinner, lunch is an option for them if the hotel, if the site, if the market demands lunch, as well as offering a 24-hour room service.
And is it a four-star, five-star, or three-star? How do you...
The brand fits really anywhere from a three to a four-star hotel. It depends on the development itself, each development will be a little bit different. That is one of the unique features of Hotel Indigo. It is not a beige box, as we would call it. Each hotel, based on our Interpret Indigo Design Platform, every hotel design will be unique. So within the interior walls of the hotel, every hotel has six or seven brand hallmarks that they would need to adhere to. Beyond that, the design interior of the hotel, in terms of the color scheme, the color palette, the furnitures, the finishes and fixtures within the hotel, will be unique to that particular market. So the Hotel Indigo in Glendale, California, will look and feel considerably different than the Hotel Indigo in Scottsdale, Arizona, or the Hotel Indigo in Chicago, or the Hotel Indigo in Dallas, Texas, or Sarasota, Florida. But still maintaining those hallmarks, and still maintaining that level of boutique service that the consumer wants, and they'll still be able to recognize that it's a Hotel Indigo by the look and feel of it and the level of service at the hotel, but many of the other features of it will be completely different and completely unique to the hotel in Glendale.
This one will be six stories tall, right?
That's correct.
Mr. Yusefian?
You saw the presentation by Comar. Is the type of hotels that you built, is that presentation something that you like, or is that going to change?
That's...
We're talking about the facade of the building. Mostly interested on the facade of the building, on the inside is... Mostly interested on the facade of the building, on the inside is something you worry about. I worry about the facade of the building. What is it going to look like? Is it going to fit within the neighborhood and the height, the design, the quality? What is your input on that? I mean, I understand that was designed per input from Marriott. How would that change from your perspective?
From the presentation that was done, the only thing that we would change is that we would scratch out the Marriott name on it and put Hotel Indigo on it.
Okay. And so your hotels are mostly of a high end as far as the quality of the building is concerned, I understand?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And when you gave the star rating, is that a mobile star rating?
Yes.
Okay, so what's the difference between the three and four? Why some Indigos are going to be three star, what is going to be four and what would this one be?
This one would probably fall into the four star category. I haven't seen any renderings or designs on the interior of it, but really when you start getting into the differences between a three star and a four star hotel, many of those determining factors would include things. Does the hotel offer twenty-four hour concierge service? Does the hotel offer full banquet and catering services? In some cases, does the hotel have enclosed closets in it? Some hotels will, based on the design, the footprint of the building, some will not. That will alter that in some fashions. In every sense of the word, without the banquet and catering facilities, Hotel Indigo is a full service hotel and would fit very nicely in this area on that side and fit very nicely within the Hotel Indigo portfolio.
So if a husband and wife check in, the wife will be able to call in and get a facial, get a manicure, pedicure, you know, do all that stuff that you generally get in a first class hotel?
If those services are available within the hotel, absolutely.
Okay. And where, how do you anticipate working with the city and Comar to bring this to tuition? What do you require? How long would it take you? What I want to know is, how long do you anticipate negotiations to get to a point that you have a document between you two that agreed on the terms of the business and the documents so you can move forward and start on this project? And how long does it, since you built eight of them already and forty are under construction, from the time you break ground, how long does it take for you to do a project?
Okay. I guess to clarify, of the eight hotels that are open now, one of those is a new build, which is in Sarasota, Florida. The remainder are conversions of the forty hotels in the pipeline, half of those, so roughly twenty of those will be new build hotels. In terms of the negotiation, I would anticipate a negotiation process of perhaps no more than sixty to ninety days. If we were able to break ground September first of this year, the hotel could be open within anywhere between fourteen to eighteen months.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Majarian? Almost forgot your name.
What level of commitment do you have to this project at this point? And my question is along the lines of if we were to go and open this up to an RFP, would you still stand with Comar and do the work necessary to pitch this shoulder to shoulder with other interested parties, be they hotels or any other possible development scenario?
Absolutely. The commitment from Intercontinental Hotels Group and the Hotel Indigo brand is one hundred and ten percent behind this project and we would put all full weight of the Intercontinental Hotels Group family of brands behind this. There is a bit of a local connection. The president of our Americas region lives in a neighboring city here, so he would love nothing more than having a Hotel Indigo, the newest member of the brand portfolio within essentially a stone's throw of his home.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
In terms of your reservation system, you've got the Intercontinental and then what is the next step down? Would that be Indigo?
Would, the next step in the brand lineup would be Crown Plaza, followed by Hotel Indigo, Holiday Inn, Holiday Inn Express, Stabird Suites and Candlewood Suites.
So Intercontinental, then the Crown Plazas. Where is your closest Crown Plaza?
The closest Crown Plaza, we do have a number of Crown Plazas in the area. The closest would be, we do have one in the Century City area as well. We do have one at Los Angeles International Airport. I believe there's a Crown Plaza in the downtown Los Angeles area. I know we have one in Redondo Beach.
And what do you generally get per night for a room in a Crown Plaza?
At a Crown Plaza? The last time I looked, which is just a couple of days ago, what I saw was considerably north of two hundred dollars per night.
Here in the LA area?
Yes. And the Intercontinental brand, our hotels there, our hotel in Century City is probably well north of three hundred dollars a night.
How about your Holiday Inns? What are you getting for those?
Well.
Here in the, here in the.
Actually.
In the LA area.
Actually, it's probably pretty close to where the Crown Plaza are, surprisingly. The Los Angeles market overall is a very good market and our hotels are able to charge a little bit higher rate.
So stay in Crown Plaza since the price is the same?
Well, we'd prefer you to stay at a Hotel Indigo.
Oh, okay. Good answer.
There's something else? Thank you. Coste? Shavanyan? May I put a record?
Mayor, Council, my name is Coste Shavanyan, Linda, Newport Beach. I appreciate the time. I see a lot of friends I haven't seen in a long time and I want to congratulate you for Las Fias over here and I'm really excited because I believe, I did not show up before, I wasn't that excited because I just didn't want to carry a flag. I think this is something a little different. If people know me in history, I like to be always in front of the age of any new ideas. You know, we have some hotels in Florida which, it's a boutique hotel and that's why I was so much interested. Plus we have a partner that likes us and we like them, so that makes it a little better partnership. And I believe Glendale deserves the best and I think we're going to do a great job and we will not disappoint you. So if you have any questions you want to ask me, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Mr. Yusefian?
I want to make sure that Coste doesn't feel, I ask questions from everyone, so I don't want to get a call later saying you didn't ask me a question, so.
I'd be happy to answer.
You are going to be the developer arm of this project, so you will be building this thing and you're building, and part of our job is to make sure that the developers who are trying to build this project are able to do that. I mean, I know you and I know your financial background, which is maybe in ten digit numbers, but nevertheless, I wanted to know is, would your company be backing this project as far as the finances are concerned?
Yes, we're committed to do a good job, especially in Glendale, as you know, our reputation is in line. And my commitment is that we'll do the best we can to do something that nobody's ever been done. The reason I like the Indigo because of the boutique, the boutique-ness of the system, the uniqueness of the system, something that I think Glendale deserves and something that I like and my group likes it. So I'm here basically to personally to give you your assurance that we're not here just to be another investor. We have more than that in line. Our reputation is in line and we do want to do a great job for the city, which I think very well deserves this kind of a unique system.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Anybody else?
Next speaker, Richard Nahas.
Thank you very much, man.
Was that the last of the Comars?
Yeah. Sorry, I know. I don't think either.
Thank you. Richard Nahas, CapQuest Inc., Ameda Real Estate Group, 333 South Hope, Los Angeles, A few weeks ago, Jim's.
I'm sorry, we're just.
A few weeks ago, Jim Starbitt and staff was kind enough to allow us to come in and make a presentation on our vision and concept for a W Hotel Aloft site at Winning Oaks East Wilson. At that point in time, we brought in our full team, which consisted of architects, consultants, our hotel operator, as well as executives from W Hotel Aloft. We made our presentation to staff and to Jim regarding our concept. Our position at that point in time, and it still is, is that the W Hotel brand is a excellent high-end brand for this particular location as well as for the city of Glendale and its increasingly positive profile in the marketplace. What I'd like to do, since we were not able on short notice to bring our team, because they came in from the east coast and from the southwest to join us, I wouldn't like to have Phil make the short, very short presentation, which was part of the overall presentation we made a few weeks ago on the W Hotel Aloft concept. And then I'd like to allow Greg to follow up with some additional comments as part of our presentation today.
He's next. I'm assuming my presentation is to start the movie?
You got it.
Let's hope you don't have technical difficulties. Our technical difficulties.
... on the road. Forget the same old, same old.
Try and start it over.
Once upon a time, Starwood Hotels and Resorts rewrote all the rules, creating a new style hotel, offering a differentiated experience that became best in this new class. W Hotels Worldwide. Now we've done it again. This time, we're taking innovation on the road. Forget the same old, same old. We're accelerating into the future with a new destination sensation. An adventurous alternative for a new generation of freewheeling families, leisure traveling neo-nomads and road-ready entrepreneurs. No matter where you're from or where you're going, we're reinventing your select service experience. Aloft, a vision of W Hotels. Infused with the DNA of W and designed by the world-renowned Rockwell Group, Aloft is a sassy, refreshing oasis in the select service desert. From arrive to asleep to awake, you feel Aloft's advantages as soon as you are greeted at our Aloha Desk and check in at our convenient touch and go. Since it's been a long day on the road, you need a little recharging. The question is how? With a cocktail at Aloft's exclusive lounge, WXYZ, a cozy seat and relax, a healthy gourmet snack at Refuel, a quick dip at Splash, an invigorating stretch at Recharge, or why not experience all of the above? As a vision of W Hotels, everything around you is fresh, fun and fulfilling. You'll get cozy with natural textures like cork and wood, as well as fire and water elements. Enhance your mood with music, aromas and lighting and make friends with fellow travelers. The experience that begins when you arrive continues in your room. Inspired by W Union Square, we've reimagined the guest room as an urban loft-style retreat, designed with extra-high nine-foot ceilings, large windows, oversized showers and intelligent Feng Shui design, along with flat panel televisions, well-designed workspaces, wireless internet access and the Aloft signature bed. Aloft truly is a retreat to remember. We'll even get your car sparkling with rinse, our self-service car wash. Of course, it wouldn't be a road trip without meeting a few memorable personalities. Complementing the help-yourself-easy-as-ABC technology of our unattended services, we will train our staff to be energetic and engaging with the best-in-class aloha principles to guarantee we're on top of it and everything is A-OK. Our online/offline, anything-anytime service will be available, playful and always sensitive to the needs of our guests. As you ease on down the road, you will find Aloft growing any town, anywhere, adjacent to your destinations, near airports, colleges and resorts, targeting proven markets and lifestyle centers. As we grow, Aloft aims to become the premier select service experience, featuring our pet-friendly ARF program, Camp Aloft for Kids, Aloft Retailing, Aloft Publishing and Aloft de Go Go. Just kidding. Aloft de Go Go is our mobile showroom for special occasions such as trade shows, groundbreaking and adopt a highway charity events. Through it all, we will utilize the power of Starwood and its best-in-class services like Starwood Centralized Marketing Delivery and Starwood Preferred Guest Program. We'll also get a little help from our friends. So ease on down the road and live life Aloft with Starwood's next phenomenon.
Thank you, Phil. As you can see, this is a high-end brand in the select service segment. Just for your information, our architect has prepared renderings which deviate from what you saw up here on the screen today. Chris has also had conversations with Alan in regards to modifications to our original renderings, so that's in the process right now. So it will change from what you saw on the screen. And anyway, with that, I'd like to turn it over to Greg, if that's okay, at this stage?
Sure. Greg Astoria?
Thank you. I do have some handouts if I may.
And then when you're done with that, tell me what's a road-ready entrepreneur?
One is standing right in front of you, so.
The neo-nomad. Is he the neo-nomad?
That's open for discussion.
Looks like any nomad I've seen.
Hey, I have no problems, I have no problems with any one of the labels, believe me.
I know you've been called worse.
Much worse.
We've been called worse.
Much worse. Good afternoon, thank you for the opportunity. My name is Greg Astoria and I am here on behalf of the Ameda Group, not a name that is unknown to this city, commitments to invest about five hundred million dollars into the city. In fact, he was one of the movie stars in your video for the Invest in Glendale and also on behalf of W Aloft Hotels. Now, the video that you saw was part of a more comprehensive presentation that was given on the 26th of February to the redevelopment agency and Mr. Starbitt and his staff. This, at the time, the executives of W Hotels were present and questions were asked and answers were given. What we would have liked to do today was to make the full-blown presentation that we did with the staff for you. Unfortunately, for considerations beyond our control, we were unable to do so, therefore we have truncated our presentation. With that, if I may.
Phil on the Aloft.
With that, if I may, I'll go to the first slideshow. My presentation is very short and it will be basically three slides. If, there we go. This is, by way of introduction, this is about Starwood Hotels. As you very well know, Starwood contains both names such as Sheraton, Four Points, W Hotels, Aloft by W, Limeridian, which by the way, is going to be happening across the street along with Westin and St. Regis. Now, it is important to realize, be cognizant of the synergy that must exist on a hotel that is going to be developed on this site and Limeridian. By the way, W Aloft is a three to four star hotel, Limeridian is four to four and a half star hotel. Your decision today, gentlemen, will have a profound effect, a profound effect on how City Center Two is going to be developed and what will happen and the form that Limeridian will take in future. With that, I'd like to go to the second slide. So who is the guest of Aloft W? Well, actually, the third slide, if I may. If we look at the demographics, the hotel is designed to appeal to singles, couples and families. It has a global audience and the core age group of twenty-five to forty-nine is what constitutes its major clientele. What is important is the household income that these folks command. That's a hundred thousand dollars plus for each household income that frequents the Aloft W. Now, why is that important? Quite frankly, many of you know that the Mann Theaters lease is up for renewal. In fact, the previous owner for the exchange sold the exchange due, one of the reasons, main reasons, was because Mann Theaters was not renewing the lease due to the new American main reasons, was because Mann Theaters was not renewing the lease due to the new Americana Theaters at the Americana at Brandy. Mann Theaters is the main draw, the main draw, for the exchange and the merchants. For whatever reason, if Mann Theaters is not going to be there, you need to have a draw or a replacement draw that is going to generate a tonload of money for the merchants in that area. And we think that the W Aloft will be able to achieve that. Now, aside from the demographics, I'd like to go over the psychographics, and this may be a new term for you. The folks that are going to be frequenting Aloft will be seeking unique experiences. They are youthful-minded, sociable, like all of you on the dais.
Right.
Tech-savvy, style and design-oriented, early adopters, value-conscious, and they seek control. With that, I'd like to go to the third.
Fourth.
Early adopter?
Yes. That means trendsetters, basically. That's what it means.
You don't look like a trendsetter.
Now, this is very interesting statistics for your review. Thirty-two percent of the people, gentlemen, use a Starwood brand most frequently for business and leisure trips. And there is a comparison of the 32% to Marriott's about 22%, to Hilton's of about 20%, to Ritz, Four Seasons, and Hyatt. And that is important when it comes into the hotel, when you go into the hotel business. Another piece of statistics that I want to share with you is the statistics that was given by Continental Traveler, which is their gold list of 2006. Forty-nine of the Starwood Hotel products were in that list, in comparison to 28 of Hyatt, 18 of Marriott, 11 of Hilton, and 10 of Intercontinental. Travel and leisure to 2006, 500 top, top worldwide hotels. Thirty-six of them belong to Starwood Brand, 35 to Ritz-Carlton, and it went down to about 18, or six to Marriott and six to Hilton. With that, that is a presentation on the Aloft as much as we could have done. As far as the economics of it is concerned, seriously, when you take the TOT taxes, the food and beverage taxes, the property taxes, and you apply the same discount rate that you gentlemen did last time for another project of 5%, you're looking at a project with the W that is going to be worth, in today's dollars terms, $24 million. Twenty-four million dollars. That's the present value of the W Aloft at that location in today's dollar terms. Now, that is 10 times, gentlemen, 10 times more than the value of the actual land in today's terms. My purpose today is very simple. We like to have...
Over how many years was that calculation?
Thirty years. Yes. And the discount rate that was used was 5.5%, not 6 or the 5, but the 5.5. We ask of you today one very simple thing, and that's very respectfully, by the way. I need a 58-day, not 60, not 90, 58-day ENA, Exclusive Negotiation Agreement. The Marriott had its chance. People that have been interested in this project have had their chance. We have been very consistent with the W from the get-go, and we really do think that it's time for an Aloft W for the city of Glendale. With that, I will answer any questions that you may have.
Do you understand the difference between a W or Aloft and an Indigo?
Yeah. One is better than the other.
Oh.
And namely, it's W. I'd like to, by the way...
What is the difference? Are they both high style or what? I mean, a hotel's a hotel to me.
If you have to ask, then you don't belong there, Mr. Weaver.
If I may, if you could refer...
I mean, I don't know what to...
If I may, if you could refer to the letter of recommendation from PKF. Now, as a way of introduction for the general public, what PKF is? PKF is to the hotel industry, as is Jack Kaiser to economic forecasting for Los Angeles County. That's how well-known they are. PKF, if you look at the highlighted portion that I have for you, in their opinion, and they have done most of the studies for every, many of the hotels that you know around town and Burbank, and in their opinion, this is what they have to say. It is our recommendation that the proposed select service hotel be developed as an Aloft by W. With that, I'll be more than happy to continue answering questions.
Questions, Mr. Cantaro?
Okay, I'm gonna have a couple of questions, but the first is, the hotel industry, I guess you know for many, many years, it's all about reservations and how people will try to book at one hotel and get referred somewhere else. So Starwood owns a Sheraton. Do you know where the closest Sheratons are located?
I believe there is one in downtown Los Angeles. I'm not so quite sure.
There is one there. St. Regis, I know there's one.
Beverly Hills.
In Beverly Hills and also down in Laguna. How about Four Points?
I don't know if we have a Four Points in the vicinity.
Okay, and then...
Sheraton's universal.
You are considering a Limeridian half a block from this site.
Correct. And Limeridian is...
Any other hotels in the Starwood chain that your group is talking to?
For city of Glendale?
Yeah.
No, these are the only two hotels that we've been... A lot of hotels have approached us for the location that we had on the corner of Wilson and Brandy, including JW Marriott, by the way. However, it did not pan out very well for us because of the condominium component, so...
And what is the W Aloft thinking about in terms of daily rates?
Aloft, the daily rates, and I have the schedule here, I believe they run about $150 to $160 conservatively. Yeah, I'm correct. That's 150 to 160 conservatively.
Same amount of rooms, approximately 140?
The prototype room count is 131. In fact, our studies are done on 131. We can go up a little bit higher. However, when you go higher, the problem is that the rooms become too small. One of the trademarks of the W Hotel is the nine-foot-tall windows and the large rooms that they have, and they will not negotiate on that. That has to be done, so...
How many stories?
It's going to be five to six stories.
Five or six. Any questions? Mr. Menuchyan?
I understand that the project on Brandon Wilson is stalling from rumors in the community. How far along is it? And the Limeridian that you were talking about?
Actually, all the environmental documents are within the city, and it's being circulated, and we're waiting for responses from the city so we can get ready for our Stage Two and final submission.
So they're just rumors?
I guess so. I haven't heard those rumors, though, Councilman Menuchyan, so...
The calculations that you made in terms of the financial...
Correct.
Whether you build or whether someone else builds, it's pretty much similar, isn't it?
Well, yes and no, but I give that to you.
Okay. I don't want to, I just want to, I just want to put a comparison. My third question is, you mentioned that this project could impact the project that you are currently working on, on Brandon Wilson.
Correct.
How will it impact it?
Well, we are referring to the synergy that exists. Now, we've always said that for a hotel to exist so close to Limeridian, it needs to be a hotel that has got that forward-looking component to it. Limeridian is a four-star-plus hotel, luxury hotel. That's a hotel that charges anywhere between $270 to $300 a night. And basically, the idea behind the Aloft, the W Aloft, which was based on the Union Square W, was to be able to bring that luxury to the select service field. Now, the synergy that exists between all of these Starwood Hotels that are next to each other or in close proximity is tremendous. This is exactly why we actually really think that that is the most important part, so...
That I understand, but in terms of design, the number of rooms, and anything of that sort, will it, will it impact, will this site impact the Limeridian that you're working on currently?
If, depending on what brand it's going to be operated or built under, yes, it would.
That's what I wanted to...
Yes, it would.
How would it impact the number of rooms, let's say, or the quality of service and all of that?
You know, truthfully, I would have to get back to you with that because I do not have all the answers, but I do have enough answers to be dangerous, and I refuse to do so.
I understand the reason why I'm asking. I don't want to take, make a decision and impact another project that the city's looking for.
All I can tell you is that our studies show that we will be impacted, and if it's a hotel from the same family, there would be no impact. In fact, they will help each other because of the regional and global draws. But if it's a different hotel, seriously, there will be an impact, there will be a downside to it. How much of it, I don't know, sir.
And both hotels are, both projects today here are three-to-four-star. They're within the same range. Would that still impact it if it's one or the other?
Yes, it would.
Because of the worldwide draw?
Exactly. Because of the synergy that exists. Yes, it would.
Mr. Starbird?
Well, at some point, we should probably do a little workshop on these various ratings because I'm, we throw around three-star and two-star pretty loosely here. At least based on the presentations we've received, it seems to be one of the major distinctions between the Indigo product and the Aloft product is in the nature of the service amenities that are available in a hotel. And that has to do, that is one component of a rating. For example, full-level food service, which means a restaurant and room service 24 hours a day. I don't think that, at least as I understand it, that's not, that's not part of the service in Aloft. There's not a restaurant, per se. There is what they call gourmet food service. For the most part, it's quick food, it's vending machines, and that's a significant distinction when you look at the rating system by Mobil, and one of the key determinants in the rating system by the Auto Bill Club is those types of amenities and services that are available. So we may need to distribute some information on the different ratings because we throw around three-stars and four-stars pretty loosely when, one, there's a lot of difference between the two different rating agencies, 3A and Mobil. They have different criteria. Three diamonds is something different than three stars. And three stars is a fairly high level of amenities in a hotel, including one or more full-service restaurants available, so...
Myself, I know a Marriott, I know a Hilton. Got wind of the W. What's a W? So I talked to some people over at Disney and at DreamWorks and said, "Well, you know, when you book people in, have you ever heard of a W?" They said, "Oh, the people come in, that's where they want to stay, at a W." I said, "Well, what's a W?" Apparently, I'm a generation too old. I don't, I've only heard Indigo today.
25 to 49.
Yeah, that explains it.
How long do you want to go back? Unless you're hip over 50.
You know, like you say, Mr. Starbird, what's the difference? Trying to picture. Only piece of evidence I got is two major entertainment industries saying that, and I guess they're the young traveling workers for Disney and DreamWorks that are in their 30s and 40s and they want to stay at a W. I didn't mention an Indigo, so I have no idea what they think.
By the way, for, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
The other things you'd want to look at would be the kinds of things that Kaiser Marsh would bring to our attention. What typically do they spend on the interior improvements per room? Do they have the kinds of amenities that you would expect in a three-star, like the full wait facilities, and additional services that can be made available, whether it's training, yoga instruction, those kinds of things are all part of a description for that style and level of hotel, as opposed to more of a traveler-type hotel where you don't expect to have those services? Those will be the distinctions.
From what I understand, we're on a small site. It's going to be hard to give all the amenities that you might, if you have a site twice as big. And perhaps analysis by Kaiser Marston on comparisons would help. Because frankly, I'm lost, and I hate to be down one street or the other one. I'm not sure. What is right for Glendale on that small site next to the Historic Alex Theater? And I have my own visions, but... Which one are you first?
Well, what interested us with Indigo is the concept of a branded boutique hotel. Boutique meaning it can bring you a very high level of service and quality, but not an expectation for it to have the size of a building and the number of rooms you would, you might normally expect with that. But we haven't had a chance to check out Indigo either. By its brochure, it seems to be a higher product than Aloft seems to be, in terms of its food service, restaurant, room service available.
And $20 or $30 higher per night.
Yeah, but we haven't seen pro formas. I suspect that higher rents means they're probably also spending more on their rooms, their interior improvements, but we haven't checked out Indigo any more than we've checked out Aloft. Based on the brochure, Indigo seems to be a higher-quality product. But as we all know, there's a long, long way between the discussions we've had now and the discussions, frankly, these developers have had with either of these products and actually building a hotel. One thing we've mentioned to the Colmar representatives is if the council's interested in continuing to walk down this street with them and exploring the Indigo product, one of the first things you'd want to see is, is a very detailed pro forma on these projects. That's where you do begin to see what are they allocating from a budget standpoint on interior improvements, and folks like Cal Hollis with Kaiser Marston will know, based on those kinds of budgets and operating costs and revenues and the kinds of amenities, what kind of product you're getting for your investment. And that's where you'll be able to really see a distinction between the different products and the different hotel groups.
Mr. Mayor, you had mentioned the Historic Alex Theater. Whatever product you select or direction you ask us to go, we do need to take into consideration the Alex Theater, not only during, not only operationally, what, how does it operate with a development next door, but how does it operate while it's under construction? As we've said in our report, some of those issues have been looked at, but they've not all been solved, so I wouldn't want you to think that any one of the designs you've seen might not change because of the considerations you would need to give to our own asset, the Alex Theater. And I think I've been clear from day one on the downtown specific plan that it had to complement the Alex. The Alex had to stand out as the major feature in that if you're going to do anything about an arts theater district or anything, it's going to be where the Historic Alex Theater is. You know, and what I've seen yet doesn't begin to measure up to what I visualize in my mind. Maybe what I see in my mind can't be developed there. I'm just saying I'm not there yet, and I want to go down one street or another. I can sit down, sketch out what I think ought to be, but is it economical? Will anything work out? I don't know. And I don't know enough about the different hotels. You know, that's why I said way back at the beginning that I thought we ought to go out and ask, "Come here, okay. Who's got ideas? Come forth. Is the hotel the best thing there? Is it going to be something else?" I don't know. And as Mr. Starbird said, kitty-corner that, the Maryland Hotel and the theater behind, I wouldn't be surprised someday that'll all be torn down and maybe another hotel. Who knows, depending on what happens on brand in the years to come. Mr. Cantaro?
Going to ask Mr. Astoria, and then perhaps later, I'll also ask the representative from Indigo. There is a, how many rooms does a Hilton have, by the way? 150?
Or no?
280?
270. Oh, the Hilton is...
83.
No.
283.
More than that. The Hilton Hotel is more than, I want to say it's 370, something close to that. The new Embassy Suites is 270.
Let's call it, that's what I've done. Let's call it 350 to be safe. The Embassy Suites, I'm thinking of hotel rooms in the city of Glendale. 272 coming online next to the Hilton, with the Hilton reservation system, obviously. The proposed Meridian, or another four-star, at 150 rooms. And then the Marriott Courtyard, as it turns out, is going to build something across the street from the Americana at 180 rooms, so that gives us a total of 620 new rooms coming online. And then we add the Hilton's current 350. Six, seven, eight, we have 952 rooms, first-class rooms, coming online in the city of Glendale. I worked in the hotel business for many years in Florida. I'm very familiar with the boom or bust, and quite frankly, I'm asking you point-blank, can the city support another hotel on this corner with 952 rooms, across the street from the Americana, right on the freeway at the Embassy Suites, the Meridian Tower?
And you forgot the Marriott.
No, he added Marriott.
Oh, you added that in, I'm sorry, missed that.
Yeah. And that one, that one I think's going to have the best success of all, being across the street from the Americana, brand-new construction and so forth. I mean, I just, you know, it's not our money, obviously, but it is a taxpayer's money because ultimately we'll provide a subsidy. we'll provide a subsidy. So I guess my question, Mr. Astorion, and then later on, I'll ask the...
The answer is, from what I've been told, this is the limit. In other words, it cannot, other than these three or four hotels being developed, anything else would not make sense. That's exactly why, though, you do need to have a regional draw versus somebody that, or a product that the draw is going to be from Burbank or Pasadena. And we feel that the W or Aloft, along with Le Meridian, will achieve that. But that is the limit.
Well, I can see, I mean, it works the same way in Florida. I can see if you own the hotel tower and you have a secondary overflow hotel, or even a more budget-style than that, then I guess that, that works okay. You're able to get through the first few years.
Mr. Astorion?
By the way, I think Burbank has twelve-hundred pieces. Or is it Pasadena that has twelve-hundred rooms?
Burbank is, is close to about a thousand or eleven hundred. Pasadena is a little bit more.
Because when they did a presentation to us on the airport, they gave us what it is that it's generating. And they are doing well. They have, I think, over eighty percent occupancy. Question. I'm going to ask you the same question as I asked the other gentleman, which is, we talk a lot about Le Meridian. Do you have anything signed with them that says that they will be coming here? Do you have anything signed with them that they cannot back, back out? Do you have anything with Starwood about any of these two, Aloft or Le Meridian?
The answer to that is that there are preliminary LOIs signed, and this is why we're working. In, I believe you folks have received an email from Starwood attesting to that today.
Oh, does not, I got an email. It says, good day all. I understand that you will be meeting with the AMIDY Group this afternoon regarding the opportunity to bring on an Aloft by W Hotels to the city of Glendale. Although we will not be in attendance for the meeting, I wanted to reiterate, Starwood engages and commitment to work with the AMIDY Group on this great development opportunity. Should there be any additional questions, I have listed my contact information below. Many thanks for your consideration. Have a good meeting. Tiffany Cooper. And of course, Ms. Cooper is a Director of Development West.
Correct.
So it doesn't say that they're actually signed anything, it doesn't say that they are, you know, anything. And, and part of the reason is, and I hate to say this, after you get burned once, you kind of are a little bit more cautious. So after what happened with Marriott was very, you know, now, at this point, I'm like, you know what? You could have Starwood, you could have Hilton, you could have Indigo, you could have Ritz Carlton coming here. And they all could say, we signed an LOI, just like what happened with Mr. Baker. They came in and they said they have an LOI, but gee, but it's not binding. Sorry, bye. And so that's where I have issues at this point. It looks like, I may have given you a little bit more if there was something and you could have come to me and say, listen, I have something signed by Le Meridian, and if I don't put this in here, it will jeopardize this agreement. And I cannot go forward. Le Meridian is just walking. Okay? I don't have that.
That's not your preference, though?
I don't have anything. I need to have information to make a good logical decision for this community. Whether it's your project, whether it's their projects, they both, as Mr. Manukin says, they both are going to generate the amount of money. We all, I think, it's better, I'm not of the person who wants to go to number five, status quo, do nothing, because every year I don't move forward, that's every year behind making that million dollars that I need. Okay? So for me, what I need to have is something, whether it's Le Meridian, whether it's some other brand that none of us on this place know about, because we are not the hip person, as they say. Well, you know, early adopters, you know, we may not be the early adopters. Well, let me see. I'm not twenty-five to forty-nine. Last year I was. Oh, well, you could be, you could be. So three of us are past forty-nine. So, you know, we don't fit in that group. But you could come back tomorrow with another one that it's a group that goes from forty-nine to sixty. Hey, you know? I don't know. Right now, for us, for me, to make a decision, I need to know you got something. I understand you're telling me that there is a synergy between Group W or Le Meridian and Aloft. So somebody calls, there's not a room in here, or they don't want to spend that money. They could say, oh, well, you can't afford us in Le Meridian, go across the street, and you could pay a little bit less over here. I can understand that. But that logic makes sense if this exists. And right now, I've heard several different hotels for that. And Le Meridian now is the latest one, which has been pretty constant for the last three or four months. It's been Le Meridian and has stayed Le Meridian. I haven't heard a different name for it yet. So I'm assuming since the hotel name hasn't changed, it's going to stay the same. But they haven't signed anything.
Is that a question?
Yes. Have they signed anything?
The answer is yes, they have. The answer is we haven't signed back what we need to sign. And that's pending what we need to do as far as the entitlements and so forth with the city of Glendale. So the short answer to your question, to the long question, was yes, Councilman, they have signed.
So they have signed a revocable letter of intent?
On their part.
On their part?
Correct.
So it's up to you now?
Correct. And we're waiting for our entitlements, as I explained to Councilman Manukin, before we commit ourselves to anything. Now, I don't know about the rumors, but it's my understanding, because I've been the head of the negotiations...
The reason why I said that, I wanted to put a rest to those names.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
So you clarified. It wasn't, I knew what the status was.
Thank you, I appreciate that. But I've been at the head of the negotiations for the hotel groups. We've had hotels approaching us for the site on the Wilson brand. And from the get-go, our, our choice has been the Starwood-Le Meridian, due to the fact that it's a four-star hotel. It's the first time for City of Glendale getting a four-star hotel. And we felt that it would do justice to the luxury condominiums that we were going to be marketing along with it. Keep in mind, the product is a condominium-hotel combination. It is not just a hotel. So, no, we have not responded, no, we have not spoken to, well, we have spoken initially, in the initial time, with different hotels. But our choice has always been Le Meridian. We've not wavered from the names that have been given to you today. Now, as far as Marriott, I cannot speak for Marriott or what happened with Marriott. I can tell you JW Marriott, JW Marriott was interested in our site. Unfortunately, we were not interested, because we did not think that the name would sell or help us sell the condominiums the way that the Le Meridian would. But we've, we've not wavered from our commitment to the brand, and they have not wavered from their commitment to us.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, I don't know what anybody else is thinking, but...
Let me, I did, let me ask the Indigo rep.
See how we're referring to now?
That optimistic, intercontinental man.
You want to talk to the Aloft guy, the Indigo guy?
An awful lot of new, and I love Glendale. I think this is a wonderful destination and so forth. But let's be real. In your opinion, what do you think about Meridian and the Embassy Suites, the new Marriott Courtyard, plus the existing Hilton for a grand total of nine-hundred and fifty-two rooms in Glendale? You think that it's within the parameters of seventy-five to eighty percent occupancy?
Absolutely. We, the same PKF study, I think that was quoted earlier, believes that the Glendale market could support upwards of three thousand rooms in the Glendale market.
Three thousand?
So at a thousand, you're approximately...
One-third of the way there.
One-third of the way there. One of the other unique things about the hotel Indigo brand being part of the Intercontinental Hotels Group family of brands, is our contribution at our eight hotel Indigos is roughly seventy-two percent from the distribution channel system. So that means the central reservations channel, the web channel, and the, the global distribution, the travel agent channels. So roughly three-quarters of the room nights at a hotel are coming from the value chain from the, from the, the system. So that actually makes filling the hotel much easier, since you can, since a hotel operator can count on approximately seventy percent of their rooms coming from, from the, the system that is in place with Intercontinental Hotels Group.
Can anybody, anybody have any idea, top of your head, what do we make on TOT a year?
What our total is?
Yeah.
I don't recall our total, but the Hilton generates about a million and a half dollars a year.
And then you add up all the rest of it, Mr. Cantaro added up, just to get to one-third of our potential? That's a lot of TOT in the future, maybe.
Burbank makes a lot. So does Pasadena.
You have to build it and open it first.
That's right. You've got it there. A lot of, few hurdles to cross. Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I don't know about anybody else, but I'm sure not ready to cast, cast my line either way. I mean, maybe the hotel's the best there, but my vision of what that area is in relation to the, to the Alex Theater is different than what I've seen. And I'd still like to, as Mr. Starbird said, maybe see a better comparison with three or four. I don't know how important that's going to be, to know if it's, what is a three and what is a four and what is a five. Amenities, yeah, I know. The quality interior, like buying a Lexus compared to buying a Jeep car, or BMW, does something different? I can understand that, but, you know, I just think it's got to be something that fits the site better. The Alex, I think, should be the main feature on that block. But, so I'm not ready to go there today, yes?
Well, I've been a proponent of that site and...
For?
For a hotel.
Okay.
I was a proponent, I should say was, I was a proponent for a hotel until, well, one, when the Embassy Suites, when we first started going down that road. But still, that's far from the central core of the downtown. However, when the plans for that tower, hotel tower, came to fruition, and then the, the larger Marriott Courtyard across the street from the Americana, I just, PKF notwithstanding, I just wonder. I mean, we're entering into a subsidy for, for whoever develops that hotel. So I'm, I'm a little bit nervous about it. In terms of the hotel itself, everything that Mr. Alajagian does, I'm a fan of whatever he does. And I think he's come up with a tremendous, with a tremendous structure there. So I was glad to hear that Indigo was interested in retaining that structure. But overall, I don't know. Quite frankly, I've been asking people, and Comar, I know, does development, many different, many different types of development. I've been asking people what could go on that site. A high-tech type of office use, a entertainment type of office use? I don't know. I'm not in that business. But it seems to me that, that possibly examining some other use might be, might be something worth, any hotel, might be something worth, worth pursuing, because I'm not, I'm just not that convinced.
I'm not hearing any of us are convinced on anything on this right now. Mr. Astorion?
Well, I'm convinced one thing for sure. I think a hotel is a good use for there. I don't think you're going to find any other proposal that's going to act as a very, a nice anchor for that area of the town. Site's not big enough to, to theaters. Site's not big enough, it's maybe big enough for an office. All it's going to do is generate a lot more traffic and not make any TOT money. And actually, we're not, it's not going to be very helpful to the merchants. We want to put something there that is going to generate the foot traffic and not the auto traffic. Hotels have always been very low-impact projects for auto traffic. And they're very high in foot traffic. People generally walk around. And this type of hotel, which is not generally a full-service hotel, you're not going to see three restaurants inside it and huge banquet halls. So what they would be relying on is to go around mid-brand and eat. They're going to go to Milano's, they're going to go to all the different restaurants around.
Farniente.
Farniente, Farniente is going to make out like a bandit. And, and Dunko Co's next door, and so on and so forth. So we always talk about, gee, let's, let's make sure we do something for mid-brand, so the merchants are not hurt when the town center comes into place. Well, this is your ace in the hole. This is going to improve your mid-brand, and also is going to improve your Maryland, because let's face it, from the day one that the exchange opened, it's been limping. It's been limping before we came to this council, and we have been subsidizing them, and on, and on, and on. And they've been limping and limping. And the reason they've been doing that is because there is not enough to sustain it all by itself. And the theaters don't do that to that extent. You needed another kind of an anchor. And I think this hotel will act as an anchor. The question is, which hotel? And that's what we come down to. And I tend to think what we should do is take the third approach, which is to go out there, do an RFP to experienced hotels. It looks like both sides are willing to move in that direction. There's a commitment on both sides to do that. And in my mind is, let the best hotel developer come forward, give us the best offers, show us the best drawings. I mean, we saw, Comar gave us very nice, detailed drawings. We didn't see anything from Starwood. All we saw was some little designs of things they had. But I understand their commitment to design something that fits with Alex. And I do agree with one thing that Mr. Weaver says, that it needs to fit in that area. And it's not just Alex. You have a very nice, ornate church down the street. You do have, across the street, buildings that are in brick. So it needs to fit that area. And just come back, and whoever can come back and say, listen, I have a, a document in my hand that we both have agreed to all the current terms and conditions, if, all, the only hitch is you, counsel. We have agreed, we have agreed to all the items. So I don't want to hear it later on, gee, we couldn't agree on the, the conditions, the business conditions, who was going to manage it, and there was, there were some issues. And if, work that out in ahead. Come back to council and say, okay, we've worked out everything. All you need to do is pick A, B, C, or D. And that's it.
Mr. Astorion, are you saying...
Then I'm ready to go.
On RFP for hotel development only?
On that site, yeah. What else are you going to think that is going to generate a million dollars?
I mean, I just wondered, if you go out to an RFP, I brought open, because you could get a whole wide range of things. But if you want to tailor it, thinking that's the best use there is a hotel, and now is the time to do it, as opposed to waiting five, ten years. That's what I'm trying to find out, if some of my colleagues also agree. The hotel's the thing. RFP for hotels, these two, plus whoever else might want to propose a hotel.
Yeah.
That's for your...
That's, that's, but that's where I'm coming from. Because we have all been here before, several years ago, before 9/11. And we did have Mr. Astorion, who came in for a hotel. And everything was just hunky-dory. We were going to move it forward, we're going to have a hotel. And there comes 9/11, and hotel industry just literally died. And so now, thank God, we don't have any of these issues. I don't know what's going to happen five years from now. There's a lot of interest on behalf of the, the industry. They're coming to us. Have you ever seen so many hotels in the last three months have come to City of Glendale and said, we want to build a hotel here? This is the first time I'm seeing all these people knocking at our doors. And that doesn't happen all the time. Everything has a cycle. If our capacity is 3,000, and we're less than 1,000 currently, that would sure explain it. We have 300. We have 300 right now. Well, that word isn't, it's on worldwide TV right now. Everybody in the world knows about it.
Well, if I were you, Mr. Mayor, yeah, I wouldn't embrace that number too quickly. The PKF report, which was an evaluation of this site, but looks at the entire market, says that there are 3,000 rooms in this market area, Burbank, Pasadena, Glendale.
Oh, combined?
Goes on to evaluate the, the financial sustainability of a hotel on this site. I don't think this analyzed, nor was asked to analyze, the capacity for Glendale in general-
Thank you.
-to support whatever number of ultimate hotel rooms.
Thank you, Mr. Stubbard.
So let's not run with that number too quickly.
Thank you for that qualification. Mr. Quintero?
Well, all I'm saying for that site is that we aren't developers, we aren't experts in this field, and so in addition to the hotels, I agree, if they're willing to put in their money, then, then I'm okay there. In addition to that, let's give other uses a chance. Who knows? Like I say, Komar does a lot of different projects all over the country. Maybe they're going to come up with some other alternative besides a hotel. I have no idea, but let's at least keep our options open. Why should we, why should we close the door on any other possibility? We don't know what, what else might go in there that, that'll serve the-
Anybody else likes that proposal? Or one of the others?
Well, I think your other alternatives are going to be a retail. I'm not really keen about drawing anything off of mid-brand. I'd like retail to be focused along brand in light of the-
We already see the exchange.
Competition that, that may be developed, that will be developing down in the Americana. Office buildings, I think we've sort of heard that office use is not very suitable because of the high number of trips, the peak hours. I mean, that's all that comes to my mind.
They've got another 800,000 square feet still available.
So hotel is good. I, you know, I'm leaning towards doing an RFP for hotel, but there may be some other use out there that, you know, besides straight retail, office, and hotel that we might be foreclosing.
Housing is the other one left.
I think we've, you know, housing is a possibility.
Mr. Stubbard?
Well, when, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, when we, when we approached you with Komar and the concept of a hotel, and, and actually, we had discussions prior to Komar coming on the scene, as, as you recall, they weren't played out in a formal meeting, but we did have interest. It had seemed to your staff for a long time that a hotel was a right fit. I guess my encouragement would be is if we're going to do an RFP, I wouldn't throw it open to anything. I don't know how you begin to compare apples and oranges in that setting. I see, I see another DPSS kind of environment, but even bigger and more difficult than that. If we're not certain that a hotel at this time is the right thing, then we ought to do some more evaluation and decide what we think is the right thing. Your staff, I think, continuously, a hotel could be a very good use on this site.
If that's true, Mr. Stubbard, then we go out with the RFP for hotel use only, that doesn't commit us to anything.
No, it doesn't.
It just opens it up to investigate.
I do, I do want to say, though, I don't think you want to put the development community through too many of these too many times.
Well, we haven't done it here yet.
Where you go out without a, a strong prospect that the winner is going to get a project. I mean, I wouldn't put them through that unless we're very confident, we're willing to pick the, the best proposal and move forward. Otherwise, I'm afraid we'll start to lose some credibility in the development community.
Stubbard, two things about that. You can't take a vote on that, and in three weeks, there might be a new council sitting here. So there's a couple of factors involved that neither one of us can read the tea leaves on. So all you can say is, if this council thinks it's a good idea for an RFP for a hotel, then we ought to give that direction to you. Embassy Suites I know is not going to have any restaurant, isn't going to have any banquet rooms, nothing. It's just a, what, a traveler's hotel? They're going to have to go to Shakers or Conrad's or over to the Hilton to eat. It'd be the same here.
They will have food service for the hotel.
Well, it's minor. It's not a restaurant. I saw the plans.
But it's a cut above what's been described here, for example, for Aloft. I mean, it's-
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It's more, it's more than self-service.
Because I looked at plans, I asked, "You're going to have a restaurant?" And they said, "No." I mean, you can, you can get some snacks, but that's about it. But they do serve food. When we went to Washington to Embassy Suite, in their lobby area, there's a table and chair- Yeah. And I actually had dinner there. You know, they, they, yeah, because they do have food service to the rooms.
Right.
So if you don't want to eat in your room, it's not going to be very formal like it is in a restaurant, but you could sit in the lobby area, table and chair, they put a little candle there. That's what I meant to say, I understood that. They bring you food, that's about it. No banquet rooms? No, there's no banquet foods. There's none of that.
If your inclination is, is to lean toward an RFP or RFQ for hotel use, my suggestion would be then send your staff away to go prepare something that you can then look at and see how that might be structured. And at the same time in doing that, confer with Kaiser Marston so we can, you know, get some sense of, of how we do this.
Mr. Manukin, he has a-
Well, my, my, my preference is a hotel as well. I think the office use would be detrimental for that area in terms of traffic. We're already going to have quite a bit of traffic in that area. And the retail, I, I agree with Mr. Najarian in terms of taking away from the downtown merchants. We have plenty of retail coming on board, so I'm not there. And housing, we have plenty of housing coming as well. I think a hotel is a good fit, and maybe we can split the property in half and, you know.
I don't think so.
Not that little site.
Hardly big enough all by itself.
Well, it seems to be a consensus to give it a try.
Thank you, Mr. Solomon.
Do you need a formal motion on that?
There's an agency motion at 7A to provide that direction.
Is there a motion to do that? Fourth with an RFP, the development of a hotel on the site?
Direct staff to develop an RFP for hotel development and return to the agency for review and release.
Agency motion, so is that a- Conditions in terms of the level of hotel we want, because-
But let us bring you back more information about that when we come back with the RFQ. And the RFQ, you may want to designate a particular level, but I think-
Because if someone comes in with a half-star hotel, you know-
A half-star, I'd like to see that.
Motor court.
Want an RFQ or an RFP?
Well, why don't, why don't you mention, you know, why don't you, why don't you do both and let us bring you back some evaluation of which approach is the best? We've talked to people who know more about it.
Let us know.
And let's also get in touch with PKF ourselves or something, because hotel people are, I'm from Florida. I know how these cycles work, and they're eternal optimists. And so let's get some real good, as scientific as it can be, in terms of what the Glendale market is capable of.
In my opinion, we've been through that cycle twice.
And one more thing, the price of the, the price of the rooms, too. Let's get some, some real reality check in terms of what they think that, that a hotel like this will-
Star definition and room potentials, yes.
Before we go that route, would it be beneficial to just look at these two alternatives and have Kaiser Marston give us financial and-
I almost suggested that could be an alternative to a full RFP. You've seen the major products. I mean, you saw Marriott that frankly, you recall Kaiser Marston said, "Well, Marriott comes back, I'm not voting for it." You don't go with it. And you've got a new product in Aloft and a new product in Indigo.
Right.
Both though by branded, very large chain hotel owners and operators. So another approach would be, let's evaluate these two and bring these two back to you with the kinds of things that you'd want to look at in evaluating them and/or have in an RFQ if you chose to take that route. I mean, you may go out to an RFQ and find, not find a lot different product than what you're getting here, and maybe not as good a product. I mean, you've seen pretty much what's out there at this level of the three-star hotel.
I'm willing to go that route.
There's a lot, these two have put a lot into already. Komar probably more than-
An RFP slash Q is a lot of work and a lot of time.
And in the end of the day, we may end up with the same brands of the main-
I suspect you're going to see the same brands. You may have a bunch of different players coming in trying to get your attention, but you have at least two quantities here that you know quite a bit more about than anybody else that, that may come into the process later on that you don't know.
What you're saying is two birds in the hand is better than 10 in the bush?
You know, I wouldn't have phrased it that way, but you always have a unique way of putting it, Mr. Yasefian.
Birding bush. Two and a half is better than 10 in the birding bush.
She's having to mix his metaphors.
I'm willing to go that route.
No, 10 in the bush, in the bush, not burning.
Motion's been made for that, is there a second?
Is that for the redevelopment?
Yes.
It's the redevelopment agency, and it would be to fully evaluate the Aloft W and Indigo hotel and return with a-
There's a motion and second. So, Mr. City Attorney, you understand the motion?
Yes, and it would be to fully, direct staff to fully evaluate the Aloft W and Indigo hotels and return to the agency with a report.
Okay. Roll call.
Agency members, Manukin?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Chairman Yasefian?
Aye.
Is that a motion to adjourn the agency?
So moved.
Second.
I'm moved to adjourn the council.
Stand adjourned at 5:02 PM.